Current and new attractions. It will connect our historic downtown and newly established Little Italy and will be a catalyst to create much-needed jobs.
Millions of dollars in investment into retail dining, entertainment, 6,000-seat outdoor amphitheater.
We have been waiting for this for decades, and it is here, this moment, right now.
And like all of you, I look forward to walking across this great promenade in the summer of 2021. Thank you all for joining today.
The Urban Development Project is in coordination with the planned San Pedro Public Market, and it's scheduled to open in 2021. The Los Angeles Police Academy graduated 38 new cadets this month. Mayor Eric Garcetti and LAPD Chief Michael Moore were present to welcome the new officers into service.
Class 819, we've graduated the academy. In other words, we have made it to the starting line. Our journey has merely begun. Tomorrow, we hit the streets protecting and serving the communities of Los Angeles. We have had our struggles throughout this journey, but today we stand strong. Each and every one of us ready to take on the challenges. I couldn't ask for a stronger team to be a part of. We will forever be brothers and sisters in blue.
On behalf of this city of angels, which I'm so honored to lead, 4 million souls that call Los Angeles home, part of a 19 million person region, a place where we can find somebody who speaks our language, who worships God like us, who comes from where our parents came from, but also right next to us, somebody who's totally different from us each and every day, and somehow it works. We live here together to create an amazing city. You now are entrusted with the safekeeping of this town.
You successfully concluded a rigorous training program, and you have shown that you have what it takes physically, academically, emotionally, and most importantly morally, to be a police officer in the city of Los Angeles.
So day to day, as you get out of that black and white and bring calm to crisis, lead with your heart. Lead with your character. And you will enjoy a long, 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 very rewarding career.
You will see people in the coming days, in some of their best moments, triumphant, but many, many more times they're worse. And you'll be the person called to bring calm to chaos. And in each instance, my expectation, our expectation, that you treat a person fairly, no matter where they're born, their skin color, or their temperament. Be proud of what you accomplished here today. Bring honor to your family, to this department, and to the sacrifice of the 211 men and women who have lost their life in the service of this great city. May God bless you and keep you safe. Congratulations.
Class 819, we are one, we are team, we are the best, the best are the best, to serve and protect, we will not abandon this honor and respect. Ooh, ooh, ooh.
Now, I've actually had the opportunity to attend some of these ceremonies, and I can just tell you, it is so heartfelt and touching. And in addition to the LAPD, four Los Angeles Port Police Officers also graduated as part of that ceremony. You know, once a month, the residents of Council District 9 gather to break fast and show pride in their community. Councilmember Karen Price was there to lead by example at this neighborhood event.
This is one of our monthly cleanups here in City 9. We take great pride in our Clean and Green campaign, and on a monthly basis, we're out in the community, in the neighborhood, passing out information, encouraging neighbors to turn in their bulky items, and we've got volunteers getting the streets clean.
I think this is great. We have this, you know, families in the community, students in the community, it brings back ownership.
When I do something like this, it's just a reminder of how there is a need for the community, for others to come alongside, so that we can clean up the area and allow it to be presentable.
Neighbors are excited to know that they can bring their bulky items out to get them picked up. Some are surprised to learn of that and other services that we offer. And individuals are very pleased to have some contact from the council office. And I enjoy knocking on doors, talking to citizens myself.
As you know, born and raised in LA, so I'm just really happy to be here and, you know, give back to the community.
Meanwhile, over on the east side, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell and the city engineer Gary Lee Moore cut the ribbon on the Red Car Pedestrian Bridge. The walkway safely connects the Atwater Village and Silver Lake communities and takes another small step to revitalizing the LA River.
Here we go, one, two, three.
Today, we dedicated the Red Car River Bridge. The bridge was dismantled a couple of generations ago. We laid a new multimodal bridge across the exact same uprights that used to hold up the old red car that traversed the Los Angeles River from Silver Lake into Atwater Village.
It's just so rewarding to see these hundreds of people out here today celebrating this new multimodal crossing over the Los Angeles River. And what's more important is the safe passageway between Silver Lake and Atwater.
I've got news for you. It's ahead of schedule and under budget.
All in all, we have five bridge projects either underway now or soon to be underway. So in the coming years, we'll have connectivity at the Los Angeles River, which is all of our goal as never before.
It's another big step in the Los Angeles River revitalization.
And we head back down to San Pedro to take in a celebration of Chinese-American culture. Lunar New Year at the Port of Los Angeles is an annual event that drew families from
Today, the Port of Los Angeles is celebrating its sixth annual Lunar New Year Festival. Today is very unique because it's the Year of the Rat, and we're actually hosting the event on the actual day of the Lunar New Year. Each year it changes according to the zodiac. Next year, it will be the Ox. Last year, it was the Pig. So each year has a different theme to it, so it makes it unique.
It's a free event put on by the Port of Los Angeles. It's a wonderful cultural event. The people here really enjoy it. You can see smiles on the faces of the kids and the families around. And we have a petting zoo for the kids. We have entertainment throughout the day.
We want to show our culture to many other generations after us.
I am so fascinated by astrology and zodiac signs. And you might not know this, but unlike Western zodiac signs, which cycle monthly, the Chinese zodiac signs cycle every 12 years. And the traits of those born in the Year of the Rat? Wit, spirit, and vitality. I'm the Year of the Rabbit. Pacoima gets a new bridge project, and city council members act on behalf of the Dodgers. All this and more on City View.
Councilmembers Paul Coretts and Gil Sadio are at the forefront of asking Major League Baseball to strip both the Houston Astros and the Boston Red Sox of their World Series championship titles due to sign stealing. The LA Dodgers lost in the World Series in 2017 and 2018 due to that illegal practice. Funding has been secured to begin the design of the Telfair Bridge in Pacoima. The bridge will cross the Pacoima Wash at Telfair Avenue, connect two neighborhoods, and provide access to the future Eldorado Park. A Lunar New Year celebration took place at LA City Hall. Dancing and food were among the festivities that honored the Year of the Rat.
This is such a wonderful opportunity to come together and celebrate as a city and recognize some of the many cultures and traditions that are represented in our global city.
A few weeks ago, we introduced you to an awesome vocational program called Skills USA. This week, we take a look at how that national program is making a big difference locally. We visited students at Eagle Rock High School to see how Skills USA is helping prepare them for a bright future.
Skills USA is a really important organization for our students because it allows them a bunch of different opportunities, not only to demonstrate their industry-specific skills, but also to demonstrate and learn leadership skills. And so for video production, that's the one we compete in. Other ones that our school competes in is Future Farmers of America for our horticulture teachers, and HOSA, which is our patient care pathway.
The number of kids that participate here is in the hundreds. I think we're the second or third largest school as far as enrollment within the entire LA Unified School District. The self-confidence that the kids get through going through the competitive process as well as doing the service projects, it takes it and makes it into a much richer program versus just do the assignment, turn it in, get a grade. They're out, they're meeting with business people, they're meeting with industry folks, they're having guest speakers coming in, they get a chance to go on some tours, sometimes they might go to a trade show, and they get involved in a much richer environment than is traditionally available in a single class period that you'd have in a normal course.
Being part of a team can feel a lot like being a family. That was certainly the feeling when the 1970 CSUN College Baseball Champions came together for their 50th anniversary dinner.
Well, this is the 50-year anniversary of the 1970 San Fernando Valley State College National Championship baseball team.
You could just tell by the amount of former players 50 years later that are here.
25 guys, 21 are still around to tell the story.
The relationships we've had for 50 years. Winning a championship instigates that, but you don't have this kind of relationship with these people unless there's a certain kind of chemistry.
My husband was a pitcher. He passed away in 2016. And 14 to 16 of his teammates came home and in their jerseys, in their baseball, Valley State baseball caps and white gloves, and carried him to his final resting place. So this is a really special group of people for me and my family.
If you ask anybody to define what a team means, this is the ultimate team experience.
There were very few real stars on the team, but we had unbelievable esprit de corps.
And it's kind of like brotherhood. They've stayed better friends off the field than they were on the field.
It's something very special, very special to us. It's not special to anybody else, but it's very special to us.
These are kids that grew up in communities that weren't rich, single-family homes after World War II, and they got a scholarship, which consisted of your books being paid for and your tuition being paid for, and that was it. And they were elated to have that opportunity.
The majority of these guys were first-generation college students, so this was their first experience in college. Their parents did not go.
We all stood for one thing, and it's still there for us. Once you become a champion, you're always a champion.
If you are close to obtaining what we've obtained, strive for it as hard as you can because you will never forget that feeling. You'll never forget that feeling of being a champion or being successful.
You may spend three or four years together as a teammate, but you're a family member for a lifetime.
That is just so beautiful. I love the fact that they were able to take this brotherhood beyond the field. And a new art installation explores the history and relationship of metal works with Black culture from Africa to Los Angeles. Ana Marcos visited the California African American Museum to see this powerful exhibit.
You can make it scary, imposing, artsy, shiny, dull, hard, flexible. You can use old junkyard scraps to create new features or mold entire sculptures all your own. Metal is a medium Black artists have created with throughout history, and now it takes center stage at the LA Blacksmith exhibit showing at the California African American Museum.
I'm really trying to explore the multiple ways that artists use metal to tell stories about Black life in LA.
Blacksmithing, with its roots in Africa and Egypt, played a huge role, not just in the history of world civilization, but in that of the US slave trade. Slaves brought over from Africa often brought their metalworking skills with them.
Slaves built much of the US, north and south, and a lot of that expertise came with Black people on ships, specifically like gates. If you think about the kind of motifs that are in iron fencing and things like that, a lot of that came from Africa.
So far, very powerful, very powerful pieces.
Very powerful. It's nice seeing the metal pieces and learning the history behind a lot of the art.
Another motif that weaves itself into the exhibit is the idea of found objects. Some of the art comes from scrap yards or junk shops. Other artists feature burnt-out scraps found on the street after the Watts Rebellion.
For artists to be able to take material from painful times and repurpose those materials into beautiful uplifting works of art that carry with it the marks of where they came from, I think is magic.
I like this one especially because, like I said, it reminded me when I was little, pieces of metal, screws and tools, pieces of broken stuff.
There are many powerful things about this work, but what I really like is that he has an Afro pick in his hair with the Black Power symbol on it. And then here in the front, in Hebrew, it translates to Rodney King's famous line, "Can't we just all get along?"
Work and the value of Black labor is another theme important to the artists. There are sewing machines.
The history of Black women working as seamstresses, and by gilding a sewing machine makes a commentary about what the value of that labor really was.
And there is this, a large stack of the metal tools and objects historically used in Black labor, from kitchen pots to sickles and hoes.
This piece represents the West African god of metal, Ogun, and he is revered across Western Africa. A lot of the artists in this show that use metal are thinking about resiliency of cultural memory and cultural identity.
The exhibit is free, and it runs through February 16.
The magic of art is how it can give everyone a voice, no matter how they want to express themselves. In the case of the LA Unshuttered exhibit at the Getty, one of my favorite places to visit, by the way, student artists chose to express themselves through multimedia, and the results are pretty impressive. Take a look.
This program's called Getty Unshuttered, and the Unshuttered program is a multi-year arts education program. It showcases the talents of young artists. It really is meant to unleash the artist that is in all of us. The idea of Unshuttered is to be unafraid, to be uninhibited, to really be able to express yourself using the medium of photography. The idea of Unshuttered is really that you want us to see something, like you want to use your camera to expose us to an idea, to a social good, to a social cause. The young people that were a part of the Unshuttered program were shining a light on mental illness to spirituality, people that were suffering with different physical disparities.
My pictures from my project, I worked with young women who practiced different religions, and the inspiration came from my mother. I only know so much about my own upbringing when it comes to spirituality, and I wanted to explore how other women kind of perceive religion and their spirituality. It's been an amazing experience. I've been learning a lot from just not only the programs that I've joined, but also taking a chance to get out there and shoot whenever I can.
When I take photos, I always think about, obviously, how good the photo looks and the aesthetic of it, but for me, I try to reach a deep personal level and think about the story that's going to be conveyed. When I take photos, I want to make sure that it's very powerful and it has a message. My project, it focuses on alopecia and vitiligo, and people would usually see those conditions as something to be shy of or something to be insecure about, but I think it's beautiful, and that's something that makes a person unique in their own way.
There's an Unshuttered app that can be downloaded on Android, it can be downloaded on the Apple Store. And then when we actually have the exhibition, where we launch every year in the summertime, you'll see the projections around the Getty of people of all ages that have contributed to that app.
Whenever you want to do something, just go for it. The outcome will be amazing.
The LA Unshuttered installation showcases the work of more than 20 Los Angeles-area high school students and debuts a new set of works every summer. I just wish I was as creative as them. And last week, we had the pleasure of meeting Veia, one of two dogs used by the Los Angeles Fire Department. This week, I got to know two more incredible canines that I can't wait to introduce you to. Oh, they are adorable and so lovable and very smart, Jackie and Blue. Meet Jackie, a three-year-old Labrador who works with LAFD firefighter Jason Chapman. She's part of the urban search and rescue team and helps find missing victims who are alive during rescue efforts.
Our dogs are trained to detect human scent that's, for instance, covered by a collapsed building, and they will alert with a bark. At that point, we'll send a second canine to see if they bark. If they bark, then we'll start affecting the rescue with our people.
Chapman has been working with the canine unit for 14 years and has had Jackie for a year. He says 90% of the time, she works off leash and for a toy reward.
We first have to find a training site. So we usually go to like concrete recycling centers. So that's when somebody tears out a street or an old building, they take all that concrete and dump it out these recycling centers, and it's basically in a big pile like a collapsed building. And we literally will hide each other in the concrete pile and then send the dogs out to find us. Initially, when you have a new dog, you're going to be training for about a year before you even take your first test. And then every three years, we will test with FEMA to make sure the dog is still up to par to search.
These canine units are not just based in Los Angeles, but they are deployed around the country with a minimum of four dogs per team. There are a total of eight FEMA teams in the state of California.
FEMA started the whole program back in the 80s because of all the big disasters and the inability for a small local agency to handle the disaster. So we created the FEMA rescue teams, where we can deploy ahead of time for a hurricane because we know it's going to happen, or if we have a major earthquake in Southern California.
Blue, a five-and-a-half-year-old Labrador from the National Response Team, is a Department of Justice-trained accelerant detection canine. He works with Gus Gaeta, an LAFD fire investigator and task force officer with the Bureau of Alcohol Tobacco Firearms, or ATF.
He helps us out on many investigations, murders, homicides, fires that are intentionally set by, you know, arsonists. He's five and a half years old, and he is a foodie war dog, meaning that he only eats when he's training, and he only eats when he's finding accelerants. So we do that on a daily basis all year round. So what we have here is the accelerants that Blue is able to find, anywhere from medium petroleum distillates, gasoline, diesel, kerosene, light petroleum distillates, medium petroleum distillates, which is like your charcoal lighter fluids. He can find like one-tenth of a drop in a football field.
The dogs also receive additional training with ATF. Currently, Blue has mandatory training for two and a half hours every day with Gaeta, who preps materials with accelerants for Blue to identify.
The training entails him alerting, finding accelerants, me burning materials commonly found in your household, like drywall, carpet, flooring, clothes, items that are usually found in the residence when it's burned. We try to identify those items by bringing in the dog, and if they have accelerants, then he will tell us which one's has the accelerants. Everything that he alerts to also has to be verified by the labs. So even though he alerts to it, the lab has to authenticate his findings. What this dog can do, no machine can do.
Blue is one of the many dogs who came through the Puppies Behind Bars program, which trains prison inmates to raise service dogs for war veterans, first responders, and law enforcement. The LA Art Show turns 25. Homeschool students get their day at an LA museum, and the Ecoplex goes emo. All this in Things to Do.
Experience the latest in modern and contemporary painting, sculpture, works on paper, photography, and more at the 25th Annual LA Art Show. Catch immersive video installations, performance art displays, and panel discussions, then check out the new European pavilion or specialty galleries devoted to ink painting from Asia and beyond. Get a true insider's art experience at the 2020 LA Art Show, happening February 6 through the 9 at the Los Angeles Convention Center. For more information, visit laartshow.com. It's homeschool day at the Natural History Museum. Learn what paleontologists uncovered during recent exciting excavations. Run into dinosaurs at the Dinosaur Encounters Show. Talk with museum educators about extensive fossil collections all around the museum. The homeschool day at the Natural History Museum happens Thursday, February 6, from 9:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. For details, visit nhm.org. It may be 2020, but the golden age of emo is alive and well with Emo Night at Ecoplex. Make your way over February 7 for the first emo nighttime of the new decade. They'll be spinning ones and twos downstairs, while upstairs, the Echo will have full band sets from Pretty Pathetic, Veins, and more. Get your emotional music fix at the Ecoplex. Friday, February 7, beginning at 9 p.m. For details, visit emonight.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you for joining us. Now remember, you can always catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
This city deserves a mayor who cares about all of the people, a mayor who's willing to try to protect the environment, economic development, housing, transportation, the needs of senior citizens, and the needs of young people. I believe that it can become one of the great cities of the world. If we can do that, we will have done much, not just for this city, but I think for this nation. but I think for this nation.
Everyone can settle down. If we could clear the aisle and take your seats, please. Today's an exciting day, but let's clear out. Thank you. So good morning, everyone, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 5, 2020. This council meets every Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonden, Biscayne, Osadillo, Harris, Dawson, Weesa, Coetz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
So Councilmember Blumenfield moves, and Councilmember Bonden seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Krikorian moves, and Councilmember Lee seconds. And next, we will have a special pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Wesson. If you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Wesson. If everyone could please stand.
Let's... Everybody place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, for that special flag salute today, pledge of allegiance. So, members, if I could direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 19 to Friday, March 6.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Next.
Items 1 through 26 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a recommendation to receive and file Item 26. A corrective committee report has been posted and circulated for Item 3 to correct a typographical error and reflect the correct transfer amount of $229,913,000. Additionally, committee reports for Items 23, 24, and 25 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Members, any specials?
I'd like to call Item 9 special, please.
9 for Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Coetz?
I'd like to call Item 8 special.
Any other specials, members? Seeing none on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, if we could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the Items 1 through 6, those ordinances will be carried over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Okay, next.
Items 27 through 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objections, those items are before us now. Madam Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
And, members, are there any specials on these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll hold the items that have cards. Next.
That then takes council to Items 34 through 38, which are scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
We're going to defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 34 through 38 are routine settlements that have been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations unless members have questions or concerns. As these are routine matters, they can be considered in open session.
Members, any questions? Specials? No? So we'll open the roll.
And if I may, Mr. President, for Item 34, in the case entitled "Niece Davis versus the City of Los Angeles at All", there is a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement. For Item 35, in the case entitled "K. Zhang at All versus the City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $2 million in settlement. For Item 36, in the case entitled "John Torres and Jill Guzman versus the City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $2 million. For Item 37, in the case entitled "Congent Hale versus the City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $1.4 million in settlement. And finally, for Item 38, in the case entitled "Angelique Pinkstaff at All versus the City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $600,000 plus applicable interest and settlement.
Thank you. Seeing no members on the queue, we're going to open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, next.
Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Oh, Madam Clerk, Item Number 23, there's been a request to send it forth with? Great, so that takes us to presentation. So, Mr. Krikorian, are you ready?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am. Good morning, members. And if I could have my friend join me, please? Members, almost 113 years ago, 112 years ago, an American businessman named William D. Boyce was visiting London. And while he was trying to find his way through the London fog to get to his destination, a young man came to his aid and helped him to find his way. And in typical American fashion, Mr. Boyce offered to give the boy a tip. And the young man said, "No, sir, thank you, but I can't accept a tip, because it's my duty to serve, and this is just doing a good turn." And that's what we do as Boy Scouts. And it was from that introduction that William D. Boyce learned about the Boy Scouts of the United Kingdom. And he became determined from that moment to bring the Boy Scouts to the United States. So 110 years ago this weekend, William D. Boyce founded the Boy Scouts of America. And in the 110 years that have passed since that time, 110 million young people have been served by the Boy Scouts of America. 110 million young people have been taught citizenship, honesty, honor, devotion to service, and a commitment to become contributing members of our community and our country. And it can, I think, truly be said that the Boy Scouts of America, since that time, have become an indispensable part of American heritage and the development of the next generation of young people in this country. Here in Los Angeles, right now, there are 30,000 young people being served by the Boy Scouts of America by 12,000 volunteer adults who help them. So I'm very pleased to be able to recognize scouting's contribution to Los Angeles and scouting's contribution to the United States of America. And in doing that, I'd like to start today by introducing a fellow Trojan, venture scout Natalie McEwen, to talk a little bit about the scouts from her perspective. Natalie?
Thank you. So, good morning. My name is Natalie McEwen. I am from Los Angeles, Western Los Angeles County Council. And I am a proud venturer. I have been for the past six years. And as Mr. Krikorian said, I am a current student at the University of Southern California. I'm triple-majoring in international relations, business, and Spanish. Since joining venturing, I've had such an incredible journey. I've been able to get so many opportunities that most people among my peers would not have been able to achieve. I was able to, one, gain valuable experience with adventure, leadership skills and development, personal growth, and service to my community. It's taken me far and wide, all over the country. I've been able to serve as the international representative for my council. I've even gone to Washington, D.C., where I was able to meet with a bunch of our government elected officials, including Nancy Pelosi, President of the United States, and many other senators, where I got to talk to them about this great program and how it's had such a significant impact on myself and many, many, many others nationwide. So with that, I'd like to introduce everyone else who's going to be joining me here. I have Chandler Hooks, who's a current life scout, and he is from Troop 1323 in Crenshaw. We have Tim Greenleaf. He's going to be the board chair. And Jeff Zolzback, who is the scout executive from Greater Los Angeles Area Council. Then we have Larry Turner, who is also a chair for the Western Los Angeles County Council. And lastly, Matt Thorin, who's the scout executive from Western Los Angeles County Council. Chandler?
Good morning. My name is Chandler Hooks. I am one of more than 30,000 scouts who have served by the two councils in Greater Los Angeles area. I am a life scout and will soon become an Eagle Scout like my brother, who was a pre-med Tulane... No, he's a student at Tulane University, and he studies pre-med. I'm currently a senior at Palisades Charter High School. And like my brother, I have been accepted and plan to attend Tulane University to study kinesiology in hopes of becoming a physical therapist in the near future. But none of this would be possible without scouting. From summer camp to my Order of the Arrow ordeal, I have learned many skills that translate to the real world, such as cooking, personal management, and communication skills. Scouting has provided me with many opportunities that other African-American kids or kids from South Central L.A. do not get to experience. I've done things like exploring the bottom of the Grand Canyon to rock climbing in Yosemite to scuba diving off the coast of Catalina Island. This experience for me... Oh, wait. This experience for me over the last few years has shaped me into the man I have become thus far. And I'm very appreciative and grateful for everything scouting has offered for me. It has become extremely beneficial in the bonds I've created and the memories that I've shared throughout the process makes it all worthwhile. Thank you.
Love that video. Those aren't just our guys. Those are your guys. First, I'd like to thank the City Council for their support of scouting citywide. You've done it for decades. We greatly appreciate that. And we do it through service projects and the encouragement of officials like you. We have many facilities within the We have many facilities within the city itself, including the great Cabrillo Beach Youth Aquatic Center. There's a lot new, by the way, in scouting today. Last year, we opened up our programs to serve all of the entire family. Today, all scouting programs are open to both boys and girls. Nearly two thousand girls have joined our program since it opened to them just merely last year. The response has been tremendous. In Cub Scouts, we now offer our programs for boys and girls in separate dens, which are age-specific, which then go into the pack for grades K through five. In grades six through twelve, boys and girls participate in separate troops. The troops can hold joint programming, and I should say the requirements, and let me be clear, that the requirements for Eagle Scout are the same for boys and girls, and we greatly look forward to our first female Eagle Scout. Larry? In 2019, our scouts provided over a hundred and eighty-four thousand hours of service to our community. Let me repeat that one more time. Over a hundred and eighty-four thousand hours in just 2019. That has an economic impact to our community of more than five and a half million dollars. Scouts, of course, are well-known for camping and the outdoors, and we do a lot of it. In addition to serving our own scouts, we have also served more than forty-four thousand youth from the community who are not scouts. Our goals for all our youth is that we can help them to become leaders of character who are good citizens and physically fit. To close, I would like to ask Natalie and Chandler to come forward and recite the Scout Oath and Law. Many of you will remember these words from your own youth. However, before you, before they do that, I just wanna say one thing about Chandler. Chandler has just completed all of his requirements for the Eagle Scout honor, which of course is our highest honor, and I'm, and he's looking forward to his board review, where Chandler will become an Eagle Scout within the next month. So let's give it up for Chandler.
So like Larry said, as scouts, we're encouraged, and we thrive and aim to live by the Scout oath and the Scout law. So when we recite the Scout oath, we raise our hand, and please join me if you know it, our right hand in the Scout sign, and we recite. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the Scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. Chandler?
Scouts live by the Scout law. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent.
Thank you very much, members, and, uh, on behalf of, uh, the people of Los Angeles and this city council, uh, I just wanna recognize the Western Los Angeles County Council and the Greater Los Angeles Area Council, uh, who serve all of the scouting programs throughout the city of Los Angeles. Uh, and so I'd like to present these certificates to them now. Thank you, members, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian, and thank you, Chandler. If we could give them all another round of applause. Madam Clerk, while we're waiting, can we reconsider items one through six? Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, these items are before us, so let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. We have now a special presentation for the African-American Heritage Month, and if we could have Mr. Wesson, Mr. Harris-Dawson, Mr. Price, who is joined by our mayor and our city attorney and our entire city family. Mr. Wesson? Oh, in our controller. Ron Galpern is also here.
Good morning. Thank you, mister or madam president, for, uh, allowing us to, uh, have this presentation today. Yesterday, this council kicked off our celebration of Black History Month 2020 with an unbelievable, uh, uh, display that we have on the bridge, and we were joined by some of the phenomenal black comedians, uh, in this country. Let's give them a round of applause. So we anticipate that, uh, this month, we're gonna have a lot of special things, uh, that, that deal with black history throughout the entire month. I think all of us should consider ourselves truly blessed to live in the city of Los Angeles, the most diverse city in this country. We are just a giant bowl of gumbo that tastes very well with, with spices from all over the world. But today, we wanna continue our acknowledgement of the accomplishments of African-Americans in the history of this council. Uh, but before I do that, could I ask everybody here to give a big round of applause to our Buffalo Soldiers that are here? Acknowledge. Thank you, guys, for being an example to us all. Also, we're joined today by a couple of special guests, uh, some phenomenal comedians. We have Michael Collier, and we also have Guy Torrey in the house. And two more quick acknowledgements. Uh, former Assembly member, the current president of the oldest black democratic club west of the Mississippi, and the mayor's commissioner on public works. Can we give a big round of applause for Mike Davis? But more importantly than that, really, the reason that we are here, the reason why this has been going on since nineteen forty-eight is because of a group of phenomenal women who have worked directly with the mayors of this city since nineteen forty, forty-eight. Let's give it up for our Author Study Club. Stand up, stand up. This has been going on since nineteen forty-eight. And it's all because of you. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to bring up to the podium an individual that everybody in the city of Los Angeles knows. I don't know what history is going to say about this council or this mayor, but the one thing that history has to say is that we have had the best relationship, relationship in the city of Los Angeles. And this young man just celebrated his birthday yesterday, so on the count of three, don't sing now, I don't want y'all singing. But on the count of three, everybody say, "Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor." One, two, three. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor of the greatest city on the planet, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, brother. Thank you. Thank you. Let's give it up for Herb Wesson, council president emeritus. Herb has been a dear, dear friend. Thank you to this council for its friendship. Thank you to my mother, who also celebrated her birthday yesterday. She pushed really hard on her birthday and got a, a present some forty-something years ago. And, uh, and let's also remember, it's Rosa Parks' birthday, February fourth, um, which I'm very honored to share that birthday. So thank you to council member Wesson, to council member Marquise Harris-Dawson, uh, to council member Current Price. Thank you to this entire city council that I know co-presents this, because this is not just a celebration for, of, and about African-Americans. This is an American and a Los Anza celebration about all of us and this city and where it has come from, where it is at, and where it is going to. Let me also thank our sponsors. I was given this by the great Mike Davis. Thank you, Mike, as well, to Author Study Club and to everybody who makes this possible. But Amazon, Coca-Cola, DWP, Hackla, and the Los Angeles Urban League. Let's give them a round of applause and thank them as well. You know, this is an important month, not just to mark history, but to make history. We don't just mark history, but we make history. We know the story of Los Angeles, though most young Angelenos don't, that we are a city older than Washington, DC, that just as Washington, DC was built by slaves, this city was founded by twenty-seven of forty-two pobladores who had African blood. Our diversity didn't arrive lately, it was here and the seed that was planted at the beginning with our native brothers and sisters that were here when everybody else arrived. We see in this city not only that we are the students of history, but we are the makers of history. This past year, I took my entire family to Birmingham, to Montgomery, so my daughter could see the stories she read about in books come alive when she stood on that corner that Rosa Parks was at, to see the monument which everybody needs to go to Montgomery to see, to the victims of lynching in this country. But we also know that Los Angeles was not some sort of passive bystander to the civil rights struggle, to the advancement of African-Americans and Americans of African descent here. It was here that Biddy Mason, a freed slave, who was Mormon and then became, uh, a member and founder of the First AME, footsteps away from where we are today, that it was here where folks like Charles Mingus, who was of African and Chinese and Anglo blood, came and helped Central Avenue be the Forty-Second Street of the West, where the greatest mayor we've ever had, in the face of racism that was brought out to defeat him, came back a second time and then served twenty years as our mayor, Tom Bradley. We look at the history that surrounds us, being made today, the first African-American woman to run a zoo in America here, Denise Verrett. We see it in the folks that have run our airport. And by the way, I'm sorry it's just men up here, because black women's story is as powerful as any black man's story. And, madam president, and madam council member, we know our work on gender equity continues as a part of this story too, so that nobody is written out. We also know the stories that this body has made, that this was a body that some ten years ago, when I was at city council president, I was proud to join with then-council member Bernard Parks, to be one of the first legislative bodies in the country to call for reparations for African-Americans in this country, now something that every candidate says that they are for, now that is mainstream, but it's because this body pushed policies forward, demanded accountability, in the face of our tragedies, built things like an independent police commission and an inspector general, demanded that we put cameras and de-escalation training on officers. And I wanna welcome the chief of police, Michael Moore, here, who has helped lead that to make sure we are better and brighter every single day. So today, we honor five extraordinary individuals, a university president, a philanthropic leader, the president of Los Angeles Urban League, an actress, comedian, and bat mitzvah specialist, and a recording artist. And we are here to celebrate their excellent achievements and to admire who they are. But let me say one last thing before we get into that. Our hearts remain so heavy these last two weeks, because history sometimes is made when we don't want it to be made. And I wanna take a moment to acknowledge the pain, the breathtaking talent, intellect, and the heart of number eight, number twenty-four, Kobe Bryant. Because, please, and for us to express yet again to Vanessa and to his girls and to the families of all the victims that died two Sundays ago, that our hearts are broken and shattered with you. Kobe filled us with awe, he filled us with pride. I have been blown away. I've getting calls from mayors halfway around the world telling their personal stories about what Kobe meant to them in some of their toughest moments. This was not just an Angeleno, he was a symbol of the city, and LA is not LA without you, Kobe. But we're grieving this loss, and so I'm gonna ask everybody for twenty-four seconds of silence for Kobe, for his beloved daughter, Gianna Gigi, and for the seven other souls, Southland souls that we lost. Kobe was Los Angeles, which is why I know he'd want us to do what we always do in this city. Come together, do our work, build a better future, never let a setback, never let a setback stop you from getting up the next day and pushing even harder. And that's what we do every February, when we reflect on black thinkers, artists, scientists, writers, educators, civil rights leaders, business people who lit the way, who paved the way, and who thrived, and made a difference in a world so often that was denying them opportunities. Let our reach always exceed our grasp. We might not always hold the victory, the fight against homelessness, which is disproportionately black in this city. I was just in Skid Row, uh, about one hour ago, and thanks to council member Weezer, we just doubled the number of storage bins that are in, uh, Skid Row. And there is an African-American artist who's putting up a mural at that storage place, and he said, "It's of a black man running." And he said, "It represents where I came from. Growing up, I was running from the police, I was running from trouble, I was running from all the things that people ascribed to me, but now this is a picture of me running to, running to the history that I will make." And so let us take that spirit, again, of not just looking backwards, but looking forward, to be humbled by the accomplishments that came before us and remind us to make that history. And by the way, it's no mistake, I'm wearing the original button from, uh, a senator who came here to First AME on the fifteenth anniversary of our unrest in this city, and with Stevie Wonder playing a song or two, and many open seats in the pews, because he was a curiosity more than a, a candidate. Uh, a man named Barack Obama came to this city to tell us the story of, it was so powerful, that child that was unborn in the midst of that unrest, and a bullet who entered his mother's womb rested in the backbone of this unborn child. And thanks to the doctors in this town, that child was saved, but the bullet couldn't be taken out without it injuring this baby and maybe paralyzing him. And he said, "It's a metaphor for what's left undone. We're still here, but we have the scar tissue around us, but we show that spirit of living and of life and of moving forward." So as that great man who became our president, Barack Obama said, "Don't boo," and we heard some booing recently, he said, "Don't boo, vote." I'm not telling you how to vote while I'm at City Hall, let you make up your own mind, but do vote, do be counted in the census this year, and make sure that you write yourself into history. So with that, let me turn it over to my friend, council member Wesson. Thank you so much.
Let's give the mayor another round of applause. It is now my pleasure to present to you a man that I met, I don't know, thirty years ago, when he was the executive director of an organization called Betzettic, uh, organization that helps people that are poor, an organization that helps people who just need help. He was a young fiery, uh, CEO, and the way we met, he called me on a Friday night at three-thirty in the morning, because he wanted to fight to ensure that an African-American woman did not get evicted from her apartment the next day. That shows this man's commitment. Now, I do want you to know, he called me at three-thirty in the morning, so his number was the first number that I ever had blocked. So ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to present to you a very caring, good city attorney, good man, Mike Fuer. Give it up.
Now, every- Now, every member of the council is going to wonder, "How come he's not calling us at 3:30 in the morning?" So it is such a privilege to be here, and I want to begin by building on a theme that the mayor concluded with. The theme of Black History of African-American Heritage Month this month is voting. Eight years ago, I was a member of the state legislature, and it was very much with the memories and the lessons of people like Fannie Lou Hamer and John Lewis and so many others in mind that I had the privilege to write California's first same-day voter registration law. And the reason I wrote that law at that time, if you'll remember, that was the time when voter suppression was first on the rise, especially in places like Georgia and North Carolina, and it was very important that California be on record as saying just the opposite, that we're not suppressing the vote, we are welcoming the vote. We're not trying to deter participation, we're trying to encourage it because that is the legacy of the United States. Now, with that lesson in mind and the theme of voting this year in mind, I'm sure that everybody here would say, whoever one chooses to vote for, we have a primary coming up just weeks away in this state. And so many people, it is said so often, sacrificed so much for that right. Let us be the people this election who bring that right into reality. Now, this is also a celebration of individuals, and there'll be much said about each of the people whose lives and careers we're celebrating today. I just want to say a word, and it's going down the row here. So, you know, Jeffrey Osborne is, of course, a remarkably talented musician and singer, but he is also a person who delivered the Spar Spangled Banner in 2008, I think, at Staples Center. And my wish for you, Mr. Osborne, is that you get to do that again this year in the finals. All right. You know, oh, yeah. Oh, to be clear, at Staples. There's no question. Yeah. So Tiffany Haddish is, of course, not merely one of the funniest people on the planet, but she's also a testament to the power of resilience and what it means to say, you know, "I'm looking great challenges in the eye, and I'm going to get past them." And there's, of course, a lot of joking to be had about not just blockbusters, but also bat mitzvahs, and so let me just say mazel tov to you today. Congratulations. And then Michael Lawson, Ambassador Lawson, who I've had a privilege to know for decades, who is no stranger to this building because his life is a testament to what it means to be civically engaged. And once again, when the chips were down, our community turns to Michael Lawson this time to run the Urban League at a critical moment in its life. Michael, it is always an honor to be in your presence. Congratulations. Sandra Evers Manley, who reminded me that we met in the state legislature a while ago, is a champion not only for bringing diversity and inclusivity into the boardroom, but up and down the workforce. And boy, is that a lesson we need right now throughout our country. Congratulations on being recognized today. And finally, I was reading about Dr. Thomas Parham as I was coming over here today, and in addition to being a remarkable leader in education and a psychologist of great renown, I read a quote about you, and the quote was, "When you listen to him speak, you hear a lot of things about Dr. Parham, but mostly you just feel a lot better." And that is something that I think speaks to what you cared about throughout your life, which is you wanted to find ways to be sure that people, especially young, feel as well as they can about themselves so they can achieve their full potential. Congratulations to each of our honorees. Madam President, it's a great day in the city. Let us all celebrate African-American Heritage Month together.
Okay, all right. Okay, next, it's my pleasure to bring up our great Controller for the City of Los Angeles. He kind of changed how that office works. You see him a lot out in the community, and he's always trying to connect, touching people, feeling people. He's really at a critical point in his life right now because he and his husband recently just became the father of twins. So he, yeah, it's good being a father. But you all know, when you have twins and they're young, you don't sleep. So he may fall asleep in his speech to you today, but please welcome L.A. City Controller, Ron Galperin.
Good morning, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and actually, being now the new father of twins, I can say, "I'm doubly happy to be here today. Really honored to be with everybody here for, again, African-American Heritage Month." It's a great opportunity for us to come together to celebrate a long and amazing history of overcoming obstacles, of accomplishments, of leadership, and also to acknowledge some really deserving honorees today. I'm really humbled to serve in this city where we celebrate our diversity and where we have come a long way, but we also know that there is a long way to go, and we've got to be honest with ourselves about disproportionate rates of incarceration, about rates of homelessness in Los Angeles, of poverty among those who are African-American and among all of those who are in Los Angeles who need a little bit more help and who need our attention. And we all have a responsibility. But how do we change these things? The number-one way we change things is we get civically engaged, and has been mentioned, we go out and vote. And the theme of today's celebration is African-Americans and the vote. That is going to make a very big difference, and we have the ability to do that. I'm really proud of all of the amazing leaders in this city and in city government who have been African-American and who are today. And we are a city that welcomes absolutely everybody. I know for myself, being the first member of my family to be born in the United States, how fortunate I am to live in this great city of Los Angeles. But we got yet a lot of work to do. But today, we celebrate those leaders of the arts, education, justice, culture, business, and so much more. So to everybody, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for yet again, another wonderful celebration. Thank you for that introduction, by the way, and may this be a great and meaningful Heritage Month for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galperin. Now, let's bring back up to the podium our great mayor, Mr. Eric Garcetti.
Thank you. So we're going to unveil what we do every single year, an incredible piece of art, and most importantly, and I don't want to show it because the cover also exposes it, but here in this book is all the things you can do to learn this month, to see, to feel, to celebrate. So there are things happening all over Los Angeles. I want to thank our General Manager of Department of Cultural Affairs and her team, Danielle Brazil, for putting together this incredible guide. Really, every Angelino should get one. You can get them at the libraries. You can see it online. And I want to acknowledge the work of all the artists that are featured this year, including Brian Tilford, whose work is featured on the cover. So I'm going to ask Brian, all the elected officials, Danielle, Enesine, Commissioner Charmaine Jefferson, to join us over here, and we will unveil the calendar. And we'll be right back for our wordies.
Okay, now, we're going to begin the presentation to our honorees. And I am looking for Mike Davis. Let's act like I'm not understanding, listen, act like I am understanding and I'm ad-libbing. Is it the mayor now, Mike?
No, it's you.
Or is it somebody else? No, 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 I got it. I got it. I was testing you. I knew all along what I was supposed to do, and you failed, Mike Davis. Okay, now, you know, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Price and myself, it's an honor for us to be a part of this presentation, but we, you know, since we are standing so close to Jeffrey Osborne, before we begin this, we're going to sing Can You Woo 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 and On the Wings of Love. But at this point in time, to present our next honoree, I'd like to bring up to the podium our colleague, Mr. Curran Price from the New Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I'm just honored to join my elected colleagues, neighbors, and friends as we celebrate African-American Heritage Month. We know it's important to celebrate and recognize the past, but also the present and the future. And so that's why I'm so excited to introduce the recipient of the Hall of Fame Award for Outstanding Achievement in Education, Dr. Thomas Parham. Dr. Parham is the president of the California State University Dominguez Hills. He is this year's recipient, and rightfully so. And let's also, we're also proud to acknowledge his wife, who's with us, Davida, and daughter, Kenya. Let's celebrate it. Dr. Parham has extensive history of working with students from diverse backgrounds, and he has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to student and academic excellence. Characterized as a servant leader, he strives to help students from all backgrounds realize their full measure of promise and possibility. Dr. Parham became the 11th president in March of 2018 of Cal State Dominguez Hills, a highly diverse metropolitan university primarily serving the South, Central, and South Bay areas of Los Angeles County. And indeed, I was there for a semester. Before beginning his role as president, he served as Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs and an adjunct faculty member at the University of California at Irvine, where he has been, where he had been since 1985. Hey, Doc, you've been a pioneer there, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Prior to his role as Vice Chancellor, Dr. Parham served as Assistant Vice Chancellor for Counseling and Health Services, Counseling Center Director and Director of the Career and Life Planning Center at UCI. Dr. P., as he is affectionately known, is a licensed psychologist with more than 35 years, 35 years, as a scholar and a practitioner. Now, without further ado, please help me in welcoming a man who is distinguished and well-deserving of this year's Hall of Fame Award for Outstanding Achievement in Education, Dr. Thomas Parham. Let me say good morning.
Good morning.
Let me say good morning to the rest of you. Good morning. I want to begin my remarks this morning by providing an expression of sincere thanks and gratitude to our mayor, Eric Garcetti. Members of the L.A. City Council, I want to acknowledge Nury Martinez, the first Latina to head this body. Congratulations to you. Also want to acknowledge Joe Fuschiano, who in fact is a Cal State University Dominguez Hills fellow in the house. Nice to see you. And also, beyond the other members of the City Council and the Author Study Club, I want to thank you for the recognition you're providing on this ceremonial occasion. Also, I want to congratulate all of my fellow honorees, whose contributions to enhancing the life spaces of others have been noteworthy and consequential. Let me say that again. They have been noteworthy and consequential. If you only know Jeffrey Osborne by the Woo Woo song but don't know the way in which he has just been a fixture in our community for years and has served the soul and the social consciousness of a whole generation of two or three with the legacy that he has left us, we are just so grateful for him. And Tiffany Haddish, as a rising star on the horizon who is just blowing up, but is one of the best examples, hear me well, of the transformative possibilities of the human spirit. It's not all joking, fun, and games, right, with her. Understand what she represents. And to Sandra Evers Manley, who not only is pushing through glass ceilings but breaking them, but also finds a way to not get up and define her greatness by the position she holds, but rather by the good that she does for others. Somebody know what I'm talking about in here this morning. And of course, my new friend, Michael Lawson, and his lovely wife, Maddie, who is with him, not only former ambassador, but when you needed to be able to do some good work, you got to call on the people who produced the excellence. And he has done nothing but produce excellence in his career, and I celebrate my friend, right? What a wonderful and marvelous human being. Ambassador Lawson, wonderful. So let me try to be quick, because I can't begin to express how flattering and humbling it is to be named to the Education Hall of Fame for this city, for in these spaces and places I occupied in my formative years that helped to crystallize my purpose and mission in life. I used to run these streets, run all around these streets in L.A. as we grew up with my siblings and I. But let me also thank all of my special guests. You've met my wife, Davida, and my daughter, Kenya, who's with me, and yes, she is a hashtag girl's dad. Let's not be clear. Also want to introduce you to my brother Gerald. Love him dearly. He is one of four. And also my niece, Tiaa Shan Nicole, who we watched her coming to the world, and she has just been a shining example of what excellence produces, and now working, in fact, as a prominent attorney. We love you, girl. Also, we have a lot of family, friends, and others who are here. In fact, some high school folk I went to school with some 48-plus years ago, who have stopped by City Hall today to do that, who found their way, and my colleagues at California State University Dominguez Hills. I'm grateful. But as I move along, I want to speak the name of Sadie Parham. Sadie Parham, who looks down on my siblings and me from the heavens and the places where the ancestors dwell. She would be so proud of her son and all of her children for a single parent, raised four children by herself, never earned more than $18,000 a year, sent all four to college. Three with college degrees, three with graduate school, two with PhDs, nobody on drugs, nobody in jail, nobody in the gang. What is it that women do in our communities that they never get the credit for? Let me speak the name of my mama on behalf of all women in this community. Because she persevered through the adversities in life despite the unjustified suffering, the unmerited pain, the undeserved harm that leaves the residual characterized by the ontological wounds and existential bruises. That was my mama. Let me also remember my late mentor and teacher, Dr. Joseph White, who found in a young man a talent I needed to express, but also made sure that our mission was not to simply achieve position, but actually to pay it forward and to do something for other people. I hope my career has certainly done that as an academician, clinician, and scholar. But know that in honoring me, you honor the California State University system and the campus of Dominguez Hills in particular. We are the largest system of public higher education in all of America. And why Dominguez Hills, why is that so special, Mr. Mayor, council members, guests? We are a campus of 17,027 students. We represent a demographic where everybody is out looking for diverse students, and they sit right at your doorstep. 64% Latino, one of the second or third largest percentages of Latino kids in this entire state, not just the city. We have 14% African American. That is the largest percentage of Black students of any university across this state of California. We have 10.8% Asian American, 8% Caucasian. We are an international multicultural mecca of talent that we are training for the next generation. And we are so pleased and grateful to be honoring the system. You honor me, right, in doing that particular space. And I am so grateful for that, because we are indeed training the workforce of tomorrow. As I stand here, though, amid the political and civic ambiance of the City Hall during African American History Month, I cannot help but recall the words of a famous educator, who reminds us that if you allow people to control the way you think, you don't have to assign them to an inferior status. If necessary, they will seek it for themselves. That prophetic word of Cartage Woodson, who was the founder of Negro History Week that is the precursor to African History Month. Somebody know what I'm talking about today. Reminds us that even as we commemorate African History Month today, the greatest threat to the lives of African descent people, in my opinion as a humble psychologist, is not drugs, gangs, violence, poverty, racism. I know you'll hear that on the news. For our people, it is the need for mental liberation. That is the greatest threat. And so I've committed myself, and we commit ourselves, to unlocking the shackles of conceptual incarceration that keep people blinded to the possibilities and potential in life. And I'm reminded that in educational systems, there ought to be something wrong with a system that leaves people strangers to themselves, aliens to their culture, oblivious to their condition, and inhuman to people who want to oppress them. So my hope for all of us, as we think about African History Month on this February day, is that we would rediscover who you are at the core of your being. We would reconnect with the culture that is often enclosed in a climate of cultural sterility, right? That too many places in our country represent that you would become less oblivious to our condition as a nation and a people, and that you leave this place, as Dr. King would remind us, with a renewed sense of affirmation about the dignity and divinity of your humanity as members of the human family, because we are all caught, ladies and gentlemen, in a space of mutuality. We are tied to a single garment of destiny. And as we're talking about famous women, Barbara Jordan will close my remarks. Famed attorney and Congresswoman was fond of saying, "It's a privilege to serve people." A privilege, Mr. Mayor, that must be earned. But once earned, you have an obligation to do something good with it. I hope that, as you know, in recognizing me, you honor the best in all of us here, whose greatness is defined in the shadows of Dr. King and Brother Malcolm, not by the titles we hold or the positions that we acquire or the wealth we possess, but the depth of our love, the amount of our giving, and the quality of our service toward members of the human family. That is what we do at California State University Dominguez Hills, and why I'm so proud to represent that campus as its 11th president. For know that who you honor today, on this February 5, 2020, is an individual, just a regular old round-the-way brother who grew up on these streets of LA, who sought to use his educational and psychological gifts to really help people. My goal is always to help people find hope in the midst of despair, find courage in the face of fear, find compassion in the face of insensitivity, find strength in the midst of weakness and vulnerability, excellence in the face of mediocrity, enlightenment and illumination in the face of cultural ignorance, and find an authentic voice in the midst of useless chatter that represents the echoes we see so much on TV news. But you gotta also help people find the resolve to keep on keeping on in the face of adversity, and also a commitment to fulfill rather than betray the legacy we have all been blessed to inherit. I remind you, as Franz Fanon did, all of us, that each generation out of relative obscurity must reach out and seek to fulfill its legacy or betray it. I hope by honoring me today, that you have said that I have helped to fulfill that legacy we represent from our African ancestors and not betray the legacy they left us. Thank you very much.
Well, I am sure glad you did not pass a collection plate, because nobody in this place would have lunch money today. Okay, I want to quickly acknowledge a couple of very important people. Former teacher, former school board member, former state senator, a former congressperson, former assembly person, Diane Watson. Give it up. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your service. I also want to recognize one of the greatest educators of our time, one of the most eloquent brothers that I have ever met in my life, an individual who changed so many lives that they even made a movie. I mean, how many brothers get a movie?
Yeah, but Denzel.
And Denzel gets to play you. Ladies and gentlemen, our current, current school board member, George McKenna. And now to present our next awardee, our colleague from the great Eighth Council District. Ladies and gentlemen, give it up for Marquis Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much. Happy African American, American Heritage 2020, everybody. Everybody, all right? We're, we're, we're just celebrating. I'm really full this morning. Not only have we heard the great speeches, I'm happy to be here and stand beside our mayor, the mayor of our city, in a council chamber headed by the first Latina in the city of Los Angeles. And let history record that the morning after the President of the United States gave the Medal of Freedom to an avowed white supremacist, the next morning in the city of Los Angeles, we're here with our mayor, our council, the first Latina president, celebrating African American History Month. It's my duty today and my great privilege to bring forth our next honoree. This woman has a distinction that isn't written on Wikipedia, and you won't find on the internet, but if you've been a community activist for any amount of time in Los Angeles, if you've been a part of Black community politics for any amount of time, you know there's a list. When there's a crisis or there's a problem, Michael Lawson, there's a list of people that you get on the phone with. And from my earliest years as an activist, this name was on that list. I had the privilege as a very young person, working for Karen Bass, who's now our congress member, of being her driver to a meeting to meet with this person. She is the Vice President of Global Corporate Responsibility for the Northrop Grumman Foundation. She is the cousin of Meghur Evers. She is a civic and a corporate leader, but she's not just a person that has the titles and the position. As the young people say, she's got the receipts. So she's got something to show for being in that position. Because of her work, Northrop Grumman is ranked among the top companies for employment diversity, recruitment, and leadership development of African American on all people of color. Northrop Grumman is also responsible for the first spacecraft to go into outer space named for an African American. She's got the receipts. Let's welcome our next honoree, the Vice President of Global Corporate Responsibility of Northrop Grumman, Miss Sandra Evers Manley.
To Mayor Garcetti, President Martinez, to my councilman, Wesson, to my friend, Curran, to the incredible Marquis, who we are seeing greatness, to so many that I know. I stand today before you, humbled. I stand with Jesus' joy. But I also stand knowing the significance of this month. A few months ago, my family and I took 200 of our family members to Mississippi for our family reunion. It is there where we stood in the parking lot of my cousin Meghur Evers, and where we talked about his life and what he stood for in this country. I still remember my mother every night talking to us about her first cousin, who she called her brother. She would say to us, "To whom much is given, much is required, and for you it's expected." My mother raised her six children and ten foster children. She raised us by one letter, was the letter L. She told us we had to love. We had to love our community. We had to love our Lord, and we had to love what we do. We had to love each other and others, no matter what. She also taught us we had to listen. And she said we had to not only listen with our ears, but more so, we had to listen with our eyes. As we walk through the streets of LA, we can see what's happening just by listening with our eyes. But she also told us we had to listen with our heart. And then she told us we had to learn. I will tell you, my learning started here 40 years ago, when I had my first summer intern with Mayor Bradley, working in the Office of Protocol with B. Lavery. I was a student at the University of Southern California. That is where I got to see greatness in action. But not only did she tell us we had to learn, but she told us we had to lift. And she would say lifting others up and not tear them down. She would also tell us we had to lean. She said there'll be times when others will lean on us, and we would have to lean on them. I will say to you, our Author Study Club, I have leaned on you for so many days and so many years. I've had the great honor to serve as Chair for Black History Month five times. And it would have been six this year, but I told them, no. But I told them in love. But I will tell you to this City Council, she also told us we had to lead. I want to thank you for the leadership. I want to thank you, Mayor Garcetti. Over the last two weeks, it's been a heavy heart for all of us. And our young people, they are looking for leaders. I will tell you, over the last three days, I've been taking students to see the movie Just Mercy. We will finish up this Friday with three other high schools. And when you talk to our young people, they say stay woke. And they say we need others to wake up. So I will say to you, I want to thank you for celebrating Black History Month. Black history happens every day. But I will say to you in the eyes and ears of our young people, we've got to show them the way, but we've also got to know when to get out the way. So I will say I'm honored to be here, to stand and sit next to this amazing group of honorees. I don't take life for granted, and I don't take this moment for granted. Northrop Grumman gave me an opportunity 37 years ago, in that role of serving as president of the company's foundation, serving as the Director of Diversity and now Vice President of Corporate Responsibility. My goal in life is to get out of the way, so that next generation can come and show me the way. I give God the glory for this day. I give God the glory for the great city of Los Angeles. As I tell my colleagues in DC, where I live part-time, I love LA. I love everything about it. I love the good, I love the bad. But most of all, I love the great people of this city. We have greatness in this city. And I'm so proud that our Author Study Club, for more than 70 years, have celebrated and recognized Black history. Because without them, there would be a young boy, a young girl, somewhere on the streets of LA, not knowing the contributions of African Americans. So thank you, Los Angeles City Hall Council. Thank you, Mayor Garcetti, for allowing our history and this moment to take place. I give God the glory, and I thank you so very much. Thank you.
Come on, give up. Give it up, give it up. Okay, so now it's my pleasure to bring up an individual that's going to recognize our next honoree. And I could say so much about this person that is gonna recognize our next honoree. But from the bottom of my heart, I just want you all to know that I love this man very much. Ladies and gentlemen, to present the award to Michael Lawson, me. I love me some me. I am such a good guy. I love me. You know, it's an honor to present to you, an honor to present to you, somebody, not that I just know, but somebody that is my dear friend. An individual, when you think about the American dream, you should see a picture of Michael Lawson. This guy was born in Little Rock, Arkansas, wound up scraping his way to get a degree from Loyola Marymount. The brother went to Harvard for law school. He has been an unbelievable lawyer, successful for over 30 years. Now, he had a guarantee, a guarantee that would ensure that he would not fail. So it is also my pleasure to present to you one of the most articulate and smartest women that I know, except for she cannot spell fail. She does not know the definition of fail. Let's give it up for Maddie Lawson. Maddie Lawson. But, but Michael overcame every obstacle, very successful lawyer. But what he also did, he always gave back, is he would take a step up the ladder of success, he'd turn around and bring somebody with him. He served on boards and commissions, and I would submit to each and every one of you that he may have been the most operative and the greatest airport commissioner that this city has ever seen. And when Mayor Garcetti and I and some members of this council really kind of shocked the world when we renamed Rodeo Road for President Barack Obama, what people didn't know, that it was Michael Lawson working behind the scenes to make sure that happened. And as we, yeah, give him a round of applause. And as we are trying to settle the ship at the Urban League, you know, and you need somebody that, that you can trust, that you can count on, that's creative, who did they turn to? They turned to Michael Lawson. Ladies and gentlemen, an American success story, our friend, our brother, Michael Lawson. Yeah. friend, our brother, Michael Lawson. Yeah.
Garcetti.
Always, 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 the entire city council for this great honor. I just have one complaint. I specifically said I didn't want to speak after these two. But I think both of them kind of stole my speech. I don't know where they got it. But it's just an honor to be in this room, accepting this award. Thank you for... It's hard to say what this means. I want to first thank the councilman for acknowledging the wind beneath my wings. There is nothing that I have ever done that I could have achieved without her.
Amen.
So, so I need to start by acknowledging my bride of 40 years. Maddie McFadden Lawson. I also want to acknowledge my family members who are here, my sons, Michael Jr. and Jonathan, my daughter-in-law, Kristen, my sisters, Beverly and Terry, and my brother-in-law, David. We are all products of the wonderful parents that we had, Milton and Ruth Lawson. Yes, we came, we were all born in Little Rock, Arkansas, came here in 1962. But we were told from the beginning that we could achieve anything. And we were also told that we had an obligation to give back. And that's what we have tried to do. So after these two wonderful people raised us, got four of us through college, two of us through Harvard Law School. Also, I have a nephew who graduated Harvard Law School. And I have another niece that she doesn't know, but she's probably going to go too. Two wonderful grandchildren. They're only eight months and two years and 10 months, but they got a road ahead of them as well. But the key to all of this is that we have to do the work. And when we are called, we have to say yes. There was mention made of the civic engagement that I've had in this city. I have been in this hall several times. And I cherish the work that I did when I was at Los Angeles World Airports. But I have to say that when my name was called, I wanted to say no. I had gotten a call from Congressman Maxine Waters, who said, "Mayor Virogoza wants to appoint you to the Los Angeles World Airports." And I said, "Thank you very much, but I work at one of the largest and most difficult law firms in the country." No, excuse me, in the world. My days are long. The deals that we work on are difficult. And I am one of few African-Americans in there, so I do not have time to defer my focus from that task. Congressman Maxine Waters said, "The mayor's going to call you. When he calls, say yes." And she hung up. And it was the right thing to do. Because if you're doing what God wants you to do, time stretches out. Resources that you need become available. As you can see from the, from the, the voices that came before me, and again, I told them I could not speak after these folk. But this is the village that Los Angeles produces. This is who we are. This is why. This is one of the most progressive cities in the country, and why we will not fail to do what we need to do for the next generation. I stand here on the shoulders of my parents and their contemporaries. And I stand here with an obligation to do more. And I challenge each, each person in this room to do the same. So thank you very much for this honor. I accept it for both me and my wife, because we are a team. And I want to just, oh, excuse me, I have, I have forgotten to acknowledge the Urban League family that is here today. Please stand up. Please stand up. This is an organization that has been in this city for 99 years. In 2021, we will celebrate our centennial. And we want you to be a part of that celebration. I am the 12th president to serve during that period of time. And yes, we went through some hard times, but we And we're going to do what we need to do to make this city what it must be. I want to thank, thank the city council, thank the Arthur's Club. I want to thank my family and my Urban League family for the support, because I could do nothing without you, and certainly, I could do nothing without God. Thank you very much.
All right. Hold on. How long? Not long. Hold on. All right. Like what now, for our last two presentations, I'd like to bring back up to the podium our mayor, Eric Garcetti. Give him one more round of applause.
Thank you, Herb. Thank you so much. Councilmember Wesson. Tiffany, why don't you come up here?
Yeah.
It is my great pleasure to introduce the recipient of our Trailblazer Award. I don't think you need an introduction to who she is, but maybe here in this context, in this chapter of history we're writing today, please welcome the great Tiffany Haddish. I shared recently with our council president the story of an elected official of color who came to me. And she said, "You know, none of us are supposed to be here." And she was referring to the fact that she was a woman and a person of color, and that she was in the public eye. And I said to her, "No, we are exactly supposed to be here." And if you look at the life of Tiffany Haddish, there's many people who would read her history and say, "She's not supposed to be here." As a woman, as a woman of African descent, as somebody who grew up in South Los Angeles, as somebody who doesn't look at issues in some sort of abstract way, but who lives that lived experience of what it means to face hardship and struggle, to deal with family, to confront mental health, to maybe not have a roof over your head, to look at her journey from South Los Angeles. She's got, in Councilmember Blumenfield's district, El Camino, where she went to high school. You look at what she has overcome and what she has done, most Americans who get to know her and people around the world, and she is everywhere. I mean, if you want to watch her in a movie, we recommend, you know, Limited Partners right now with Salma Hayek and Rose Byrne. If you like the small screen, you can see her in The Last OG with Tracy Morgan on TBS. If you are maybe a little younger and watching animated, you can go on Netflix and Tuca and Birdie. She is everywhere. You might even, if you live in Los Angeles... Yeah, I know. But my, my daughter, she's eight, but she's going on 25. Secret Life of Bets 2. Much more kid-friendly. They do. And you get to see her in LA in three dimensions, because you can see her maybe on Lucky Night, one of the, doing stand-up, The Laugh Factory, The Comedy Store, The Improv. But it is not what she does in front of the camera, in front of a microphone. It's who she is when those shut off that she deserves this award. You know, she traces some of her ancestry to Eritrea, where I used to live. So I say salaam to my Eritrean brothers and sisters that are here, a community that, nice ululating. That's good. The folks that were mourning the fall of Nipsey Hussle this past year, a community that is part of our African-American history in Los Angeles, because it's one of the largest communities of Ethiopians, Eritreans, outside of the home countries. She's somebody who grew up and got back in touch with her Jewish heritage, because there are Jews in Africa. You don't have to look like Mike Fewer, or Bob Blumenfield, or Eric Garcetti, be Jewish. This is part of the strains of history that we learn when we learn about ourselves and celebrate African-American history. So there's no question that today we are honoring a trailblazer, an incredible woman, and she's a reminder of how far we have to still go. In 2017, she was the first African-American comedian to host Saturday Night Live. That was just three years ago. So let's celebrate.
Female comedian.
Female comedian. And by the way, she won an Emmy Award for that. No matter what she does next...
It is South Central Los Angeles right now.
Yeah. So no matter what she does, she's going to keep us laughing. She's going to keep us questioning. She's going to correct your speeches. She's going to do whatever it takes to get the job done. She got her bar mitzvah when she was 40. Let's hear for bar mitzvahs when you're 40. Me too. And she is one who represents the very best of this city, the best of this community, and the best of America. Please welcome the one and only Tiffany Haddish.
Thank you.
Take it away.
All right. I'm going to make my speech, just like a regular chick from South Central speech. We're going to keep it one, honey. First of all, I want to thank God. I want to thank whoever, whoever was like, Tiffany should get the Trailblazer Award. Thank you. Because I have been on a lot of trails blazing. It's hot out here. I'm tired. I want to say thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the whole council. Thank you to every citizen here in Los Angeles who supports, even if you don't support, just thank you to taxpayers, because I wouldn't be here if y'all didn't pay taxes. I'll tell you that foster care system is something else. And, and I think it prepared me for this journey that I'm on right now. It prepared me in so many ways, you know, living with so many different types of people, being in different environments, really prepared me for entertainment, because I'm always surrounded by different types of people. And there's a lot of rejection. So, yeah, I'm strong with the rejection. I'm strong with that. I could take a no, and I'll figure out another way to give my yes. And, uh, I'm hungry, y'all. We've been sitting here a long time. I'm starving. It's hard for me to think when I'm hungry. I'm a human. And there's a little, I get a little hangry inside. And I really want to just spew out all kind of positivity and wonderfulness. And, and I usually do that when I'm not hungry. I heard there's lunch outside. I want to get to that lunch. But I, I am very grateful, and I am very, very honored. And next time I come back, I expect to get the key to the city. I want the key. That's what I want, the key. I want the key. And I'm, whatever y'all need from me, as, as a citizen, as a person who wants to contribute to my city, I love, I love Los Angeles. I've been a lot of places. And this is my favorite, my favorite place. My favorite place. And whatever I can do to be of service, I'm here to be of service. I'm here to be of service to the whole world, to Eritrea, where my father came from. And he, he came here as a refugee, and this city embraced him. And he did lots of things, maybe things he shouldn't have did, but he still did things. And that's how I got here. Ta-da. And my mother, she, she, you know, before she had her accident, I just wanted to say I love my mama very much. We got a crazy relationship, but I love her very, very much. And before she had her accident, she was a homeowner in this city. She owned businesses in this city. She, she always made it very clear that if you want to have anything, you must own land, you must have, you must be willing to put in the work. And that's what I've always been doing, putting in the work. And now I got my little bit of land, and I got, we're going to have to have a conversation, sir. I got a notice in the mail, and I was like, "What is this?" I had an inspection yesterday, but I was here. I ain't even know there was an inspection. Y'all can send that inspection, but can't send a little birthday card, huh? See what I'm saying? Can't send a thank you card, but you got the address. What's that? What's that? That's a thank you?
That's a thank you for you, from Mitchell Fair.
That's so nice. Finally, a thank you. But is this from the franchise board that gets my tax money? Oh, thank you, guys. And they signed it and everything. And a cookie. I like this council. Y'all got a good sense of humor. I like y'all. I like, I'm coming back. I'm going to come back every Wednesday and Friday. I'm coming through the check on y'all. I really appreciate this and this honor. And I'm going to make ready for the next one.
Give it up again for Tiffany Haddish. Come on. Tough, tough, tough act to follow. But we've got an amazing awardee for our last, an honoree that is known around not only this city and this country, but this world, a living legend. I'm going to invite him to come up here. Recording artist, Jeffrey Osborne, ladies I always say, there's two classes of people in LA, those who are lucky enough to be born here, like some of us, and those smart enough to come here. And Jeffrey was one of the latter. Left his hometown of Providence, Rhode Island, and came to Los Angeles to find his place in music and cultural history, to take a gig as drummer for the band Love Men LTD. And he was LTD not just as a drummer, but as lead vocalist, more than a decade before he also felt that it was time to break out on his own. We know him and we love him. As a solo artist, he's been nominated for four Grammys, produced five gold and platinum albums, and among other hits, scored the international hit in 1982, On the Wings of Love. How many people proposed after listening to that? These days, he is not only a fixture in Los Angeles, but in the music scene, helping bring up a new generation of artists, helping inspire those who are part of the industry. I'm sick of hearing about the nomination, so I'm hoping a Grammy will be coming your way in the near future, something that is long, long overdue. But he is always performing, touring the world, making a difference also through his foundation, Jeffrey Osborne Foundation, which supports, in this most creative city, and we honor African-American history, and we honor our music capital status written disproportionately by those of African-American descent, and yet, for a black or brown child in our school system, and I know Dr. McKenna's working on it, too few of them have access to arts and music education, where there are more arts...
After those incredible speeches. I want to thank Mayor Garcetti, everyone on the council. I want to thank especially Mike Davis for giving me this call. He called, and I had to say yes to this, you know. This is amazing. This is more special than a Grammy. Without a doubt. This is a recognition that, you know, I never envisioned. You know, I did grow up in Providence, Rhode Island. I was the youngest of 12 children. Yeah, wow. But before I go any further, I do want to acknowledge that my wife is here today, Sheri Osborne. And sitting next to her is my son Jeffrey Osborne. And my daughter Dawn Osborne and Janine Osborne are here. And my brother-in-law Bobby Matthews is here, and his wife Rochelle. And who else am I? And my grandson is right here videotaping it, Josh. Right. So, you know, because I got grandkids that are kind of getting up their own age. So the Living Legend Award means you've gotten a little old. You got a little old to be called a legend. And it's just so special, because in growing up, you know, being the youngest of 12, I got to listen to everything. My father was a great trumpet, jazz trumpet player, so I got to listen to all great legends in music, people like Clifford Brown, and Miles Davis, and Freddie Hubbard, and my sisters all sang. So I listened to the Sarah Vons, and the Billy Eckstines, and the Ella Fitzgeralds. And I watched there, they had an incredible journey, because back then, there were places that we couldn't go. If we went, we had to stay outside of the normal hotels, which is, you know, when you think of Martin Luther King getting assassinated at the Lorraine, that's where a lot of our musicians found as a haven, one place they could go, get a good meal, know they were safe. So I respect the people that came before me. And this is even more special, because I get to receive this while I'm alive, you know, and so many of our great peoples don't get acknowledged really until after they're gone, and then we can detail and see what they've meant to us. I mean, look at what just happened with Kobe. I mean, we knew he was great, but now in detail, you can see everything that he did and just magnifies his greatness. So for me to be here and be able to appreciate, being appreciated, is very special to me, more special than you could ever imagine. I never imagined it happened, growing up, listening to, you know, I grew up in the '60s when Motown was alive, and I was listening to The Temptations, and I wanted to be a Temptation, and it was a dream. And then, before you knew it, I was out here in L.A. onstage doing shows with The Temptations. I've done shows with everyone I've admired. So it is a dream. I thank the Lord, because it's a blessing. I thank Him. It was a gift, just a gift given to me. I had no idea. I thought everybody could sing. I was walking around singing when I was 13 years old. I was singing in nightclubs. I'm thinking, everybody can sing. I didn't realize how much of a gift it was. So I am very thankful. I thank the Lord for this gift. I didn't have to do anything. I didn't have to really study or anything. It was just a God-given talent that was given to me. So I'm very appreciative, and I make sure that I take care of it. I don't take it for granted. And it's amazing to think that what I love to do, what I would do in my shower, I've been able to touch so many lives. And you don't realize that until somebody acknowledges you like this, giving you a Living Legend Award. So I do want to thank everybody. I'm not a speaker, so I'm not going to stay long here, but I want to thank everybody here for acknowledging me. My dad would say, just sing. You can't talk, boy, just sing. And I want to, can you woo-woo-woo-woo? But I'm very thankful, because doing what I love to do and be able, being able to reach and touch people, and when people come up to me and say, you know, I got married to one of your songs, it means so much. It means that I have left something here, and I guess that's what a legend is, it's someone that leaves a legacy, that will not be forgotten. And to think that you all think of me in that way is unbelievable. It really is unbelievable. I also want to thank Bill Sharp, who's here, because Bill is a musician that works with me for over 30 years, and I'm impressed to see him here. And I want to thank a very close friend of mine, Arnold Hackett. I know a lot of you know Arnold Hackett, because Arnold Hackett is one of the great businessmen here in the city of Los Angeles. I must say, I did have the chance to meet Kobe on several occasions. I sang the Lakers, I sang the National Anthem for the Lakers. I opened their season for 32 years straight, singing the anthem. I probably got five championship rings from the Lakers, so, you know, I think I've sung for everybody in the city. I know I've sung for the Urban League. I know I've sung at Irvine when Dr. Param was there. I'm waiting for the invite for Northrop. I'll be there. Just book me. Just book me, I'll be there. I sang the National Anthem on the City Hall steps when Magic and them won the anthem, and rode the bus with the Lakers, so I've been very close to that organization. But I can't thank you all enough, really. This is very humbling, and I mean it when I say this is more significant than any Grammy that I could have gotten. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, we got to let Mr. Sidiya speak. He's been waiting for over an hour. He really wants to say something. Go ahead, Mr. Sidiya.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for all that you do for our city. We could not appreciate your leadership any more than we do today, given the state of our nation and all you do to bring us together, and so I want to say thank you. I want to thank Herb Wesson and Karen Price and Marquise Harris-Dawson, because you are the representatives of your community, and you are the men who articulate the hopes and the aspirations of a community that is so rich and such a gift to our city, to our great city. And you do that ably, you do that with great courage, great effectiveness, and all of you should be honored today as trailblazers yourself, and so I want to say thank you. As your colleague, I don't think we appreciate you enough, and so I want to take this moment to say thank you. And I just want to take a second just to thank in general the entire African-American community. You see, I've had a rich life. I'm a very proud third-generation Angelino, Mexican-American, and proud of my heritage and my roots. I've had a rich life. I've traveled the world. I've met many great people like yourselves. I've done a few things that are noteworthy, and so I've been really blessed and feel very blessed today. But none of that happens without this very special, unique interaction that my family has had with the African-American community. My father's life began to take form when he lived in the South, when he trained as a paratrooper. My household was full of African-American friends of my parents that they had from the factories that they worked at. Bernadette was my mom's best friend, and Shaw was a big African-American man living up in Altadena, used to be at our house, Boral Heights. Very rich life experience that enriched my life, both through sports, as you know, Coach Wesson, and through my first encounter with Winston Dobie, who was my mentor and who took me to UCLA. That changed my life and inspired me with a sense of service. He introduced me to Bill Alkins, got me a job with Mayor Tom Bradley. I got to meet Olivia Mitchell, who my granddaughter's called Grandma, and it began to propel my life of public service. Of course, you know my relationship with the Rainbow Coalition and Jesse Jackson. Got to meet Reverend Lawson. My wife and I, when she was alive, we traveled with the Reverend throughout the South. So all I've done in my life for my community has been part of what I've benefited from, the African-American community, the courage that I learned, the fight for justice. When I was the head of Local 660, that was an African-American union. And I learned so much from Jackie Cox and Patsy Howard, right? And spent a lot of Sundays with Bishop Blake at West Angeles and all the churches in South L.A. And so I just want to say thank you. It's just, it's just been such a blessing for me. Mr. Wesson, you've been chief of staff when we met, then you were my speaker, my president, and as you know, I'll never forget all you did when my wife was ill. That's for life. And so I've learned so much. Marquise Harris-Dawson, you took me the other day to the African-American Film Critics, and it was amazing, the generosity and the spirit and the openness in this city today, Mr. Mayor, because you'll remember this, and all of us remember. Who would think that today we would be celebrating this unity? The African-American Film Critics Award honored Parasite made by Koreans. And then today, we continue to mourn the loss of Kobe. Kobe, who was teaching us about unity, a man for the world, because our communities, our communities of the world. I went by Saturday, and it was amazing to be there, so surreal and serene at the same time, just so special. Men and women hugging each other, crying, biracial families. Now that's unity. And so I just, it's just, I just needed to take this second to say thank you. When you think of the place and the moment we're in, in history, in this nation, what we heard yesterday, that foolishness, and what we'll hear later today, that denial of history and reality, Mr. Mayor, you talk about, we are making history. This city, and as you say, Mr. Wesson, the winds of this nation start from the west to the east, and, boy, do they need us now. This room and what we're experiencing here at this very moment, at this time, Mr. Osborne, you forgot you played for me at my Unity Gala with Reverend Jesse Jackson. You sure did, and I thank you for that. And so I just want to close by saying I want to thank all the African-American community for what they do for this city, but what they've done for me, because I've served my community, and I've done the best that I can, but I've done so because I've learned so much. That spirit of service comes to me and through me from the African-American community. That courage to fight, to do what's right, comes from my experiences with the African-American community, and that unity and that need for unity, I know comes from that, because we are all committed to this belief that all of us should pursue and continue to fight for the dignity and respect that God all intended us. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you all so much. We know it has been a robust presentation, but the words that needed to be said were said. Thank you again to Mike Davis. I want to thank him. Give him another round of applause, and thank him for really pulling this together. Thank you, Madam President. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Another big round of applause for honorees. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you to Mike Davis. Thank you very much, sir. Great job. Turn on, can we turn on the mic from the podium? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just for two seconds, Madam President, there will be the annual Black History Month slide presented by our Postmaster General here outside. We want to thank the U.S. Postal Service for always honoring African-Americans. We appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
My sister, we are your biggest fans. We love your albums. Yeah. Thank you so much, man.
Sergeants, if you can, please help me clear the middle aisle so we can move on with Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to item number eight. This item was called "Special" by Mr. Corret. Okay, apologize. We're going to move on to item number nine. Mr. Blumenfeld, did you call that special, sir?
I did. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, anybody who may be listening.
Sorry, James, can you please help me clear the center aisle? I'm going to ask our guests, if you can please exit quietly. We need to get back to the business of our day this morning. Thank you.
Great.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Blumenfeld. Go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam President. The reason I called this one special, I think it's important, especially as we're talking about equity issues today. This item instructs the General Services Department and Wreckin' Parks to report on the feasibility and cost in providing free feminine hygiene products in all restrooms in city facilities. Menstruation is experienced by over half of the population for much of their lives, and it should not be treated any differently than other basic bodily functions. It's unhygienic not to have access to menstrual products, just as much as it would be unhygienic not to have access to toilet paper or soap. The only real difference is that these other products are also used by men, and there's this irrational stigma around menstruation. So it's important for us to come to the times and provide this basic necessity. And I'll confess, as a man, I hadn't given this issue a lot of thought, but when my wife, and many of you know her, she asked me why the city didn't provide these products in our parks, and I didn't have a good answer for that. And I said, yeah, you're right, we should be providing... And I said, yeah, you're right, we should be providing these products in our parks. We should be providing them in our, in our services and hence this motion. And by adopting this motion, Los Angeles is taking a large stride toward becoming a leader. In what I have found to be known as a national movement. And for what many call menstrual equity. And it's especially important for teenage girls. Whose periods may be irregular or unpredictable. A lack of ready access to hygiene products can be a barrier to participating in sports or otherwise enjoying our parks or using our libraries. It's also important for low-income women. A study in St. Louis found that two-thirds of low-income women couldn't afford menstrual hygiene products at least once during the previous year. And more than 20% said they faced this problem every month. And nearly half of them said that they sometimes had to make a choice between food and hygiene products. While the Department of Wreckin Parks provides free hygiene products at certain campsites, certain locations, and has machines for sale in some others. We can, we should, and we will do better as a city of Los Angeles. I ask for your I-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, I just wanted to rise and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for leading on this issue and allowing me to be there with you on it. And in particular, I think the time is right. With respect to the fact that we are doing so much to encourage young girls to participate in youth sports and making sure that this is a prevalent, accessible opportunity for them, that because growing young girls, their cycles are unpredictable and their bodies are changing. And so making this available for our young women is incredibly important. And so I want to thank you. I know, as the father of a daughter, I know, and I'm the mother of a daughter and as a woman, I know that as parents, these are things that we can't always predict. But I appreciate you and, and your leadership as a girl dad. So thank you for your work on this.
Mr. Kerkorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. I hadn't planned to speak, but your, your words kind of inspired me. As you'll recall, there's a high school in my district that did a service project in India, in rural India, to provide them with a machine that could provide low-cost feminine hygiene products. And they filmed this, made a documentary, and they won the Academy Award. The Oakwood School won the Academy Award for it. But, but in telling that story, I remember how shocking it seemed to me that in these rural villages, because of menstruation and the unavailability of hygiene products, girls were dropping out of school. Girls were, you know, failing to get an education and then, you know, were held back for the rest of their lives because of the unavailability of some, a simple availability of a feminine hygiene product. And so I thought how shocking that was. And then when I heard about your motion, I thought, wait a minute, we don't already do that? How is it possible that in, in the city of Los Angeles, we're not already providing these basic hygiene products in our restrooms? And I, you know, as a man, I don't get to witness the inside of women's rooms, so I didn't realize that that was the case. I was, I was actually shocked. And how much further ahead are we than rural villages in India if we're not providing a basic, fundamental hygiene product that's necessary to half of our population? So, Mr. Blumenfeld, thank you very much for, for bringing this to us and I'm proud to support you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Seeing no other speakers, just go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, next item is item number eight, Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Madam President. If we could continue this item to February 12th, that would now solve any problems we have.
Very well, without objection, that would be the order. Thank you. Let's move on to multiple speaker cards. Mr. Previn, you're speaking on items twenty-seven through thirty-three.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I was trying to come through the gate.
Twenty-seven through thirty-three.
Okay, thank you so much. And first of all, I just have to say thank you to Blumenfeld and Rodriguez on the feminine and, and Mr. Kerkorian, period, end of sentence, Oakwood School. It's fantastic. And I think that we can do even more. Why don't we, and I challenge the counsel...
Thanks, Mr. Previn. Why don't we say that for the general public comment and go on to the agenda items now?
I'm just going to get into the agenda items.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, okay, fine. But we can provide them for everybody, you know? We can't provide a restroom at the universal...
So let's go on to the agenda items and again, you can do that in general public comment.
I'm sorry, sir, we waited a very long time. If you would rather that I not speak today.
You need to get back on the item, Mr. Previn.
CD5, CD5 is a great man, and he is making available finally, some city property over on Beaver Will. And I think that that is, that shows the kind of tenacity to find city property and sell it for money that we can then use hopefully in one of the many housing trust funds, you know? The balance of which is, is growing at a, at a rate. Today, we have Quimby refunds. Now, Quimby refund is when Parks and Rec, who was photographed with Mr. Kerkorian and his campaign stuff...
So, Mr. Previn, it seems to me that twenty-seven through thirty-three are all Tefra items.
I'm sorry, twenty-seven through, they're Tefra hearings.
I believe you signed up for twenty-seven through thirty-three. They're all Tefra items.
Well, I signed up for, I know what I signed up for.
If you want to get on to your general public comment, we can do that.
This is a, there's a pattern here of limiting the scope of what people speak about.
The only pattern is you're not getting on the issues that you're not, that you signed up to speak on.
You know, you make it seem like we are sitting here ignoring what's happening. We know exactly what's going on. Okay, is twenty-six in this, I think it's appropriate.
No, it was twenty-seven to thirty-three. Maybe you should just go into your general public comment.
Just go ahead and give him his one minute of general public comment.
No, I'm not going to do that. I'd rather find the item.
Mr. Previn, go ahead and speak on your general public comment, sir.
I'm not disturbing you. I'm not disturbing you. Thirty-three is in our district, just before I get there. Thirty-three is in our district. And now you're just going to go into my general public comment? Okay, fine. Well, then I'll just move to the general public comment. Thank you. It is an unbelievable shame that a woman who sued the city of Los Angeles Department of Transportation by the name of Angelique Pinkstaff was sexually harassed repeatedly. She has an autistic child. And you, Council President Rodriguez, have not raised, lifted a finger, you're just going to cut a check for $600,000. And this follows on a sexual harassment at animal services and at LAPD, Mary Ann Booneck. There is a string of sexual harassment items under your leadership. And it's appalling because they're all buried. And why would you do that? Why wouldn't you fire those officers, not settle the case, but actually protect the employees and eliminate this endless set of retaliations that continues unchecked? And it was very hurtful for me to hear Mike Fuhr stand up and talk about the Voting Rights Act, which is exactly the law with which we're going to dismantle the crazy 500. Why is it 50 for Congress signatures to get on the ballot and 500 at City Hall? Because you violate people's rights. It's suppression.
Next speaker, Denise Woods, are you here? Denise Woods? Someone here with that name? Mr. Moses, you're speaking on items twenty-seven through thirty-three in your general public comment.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I too love my people. But we do not have any representation with Wesson, Price, and Dawson. Items twenty-seven through thirty-three. The people of Los Angeles are being fleeced unbelievably. $1.2 billion bond HHH. Twenty-seven through thirty-three, the average of these units that they're proposing to build, seven units, I mean, seven projects, the average cost is $336,532 per unit. This is criminal, criminal behavior. $1.2 billion of this HHH bond money that the beautiful people of Los Angeles have pledged. You, counsel, and the city, city attorney, and the mayor are spending an average of $551,000 per unit. These units can be, that's, so you're on track to build 2,181 units when it was promised that out of the bond money, it would, HHH would be 10,000 units. Just do the math. $550,000 into $1.2 billion is, is 2,180 units. Meanwhile, the people, the people that we're sitting here talking about in these beautiful presentations are on the street. And you people don't care. Versus, say, the ADU model, you could give that money or grant the money or put, put it in low-interest loans to the people to build garage conversions at a maximum of $50,000 apiece, you would build 24,000 units. Why do that? Why not do that? Why use the union and developer model? Because you people are awash in money. You're stealing the money and the people are still going to be on the street. You're going to go back to the citizens for more money? Campaign contributions from the unions? Campaign contributions from the developer up the ying yang? These items twenty-seven through thirty-three, people listening to me, were being killed with this. Per unit, these units can be billed at, for $50,000 maximum. Just these seven projects is $336,000. Stop stealing, the people are suffering.
You want your one minute of general public comment now, sir?
Thank you. It was disgraceful yesterday, Wesson, Price, and sleazy Marqueezie Dawson with that parade of buffoonery up here yesterday. With Eddie Griffith and filthy language being used. That is not black culture. That's, you can call that comedy, but that's not black culture. You find black culture at the Afibah Center. Black culture, black knowledge, black community center, which sleazy Marqueezie Dawson is Mike Fuhr, the butcher, is trying to steal Nipsey Hussle's property. Murdered Tim Morrow via prosecution. Dorset Village, sleazy Dawson is evicting 206 units. That's almost 1,000 people, more homelessness, stealing the EDD office. That's Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Next speaker is Patricia McCallister. Ms. McCallister, you're speaking on items twenty-seven through thirty-three and your general public comment.
Okay, yes, let me educate the people about this money you want to use for building, you want to use, here, 23 million for the construction of a 98-unit multifamily housing project as Hope on Hyde Park Apartments located at 6501 Crenshaw Boulevard. Here, you want 18 million for a 55-unit multifamily housing project at 11001 South Broadway. And I'm giving the people these addresses because I want you guys to drive by there. Here's another one, 27 million for the Palm Vista Apartments at 20116 20128 Sherman Way. Here, another one, issuing multifamily housing revenue bonds in the amount of 18 million to finance the acquisition and new construction of a 49-unit multifamily housing project known as the Tarseya Apartments located at, located at 9502 North Van Nuys Boulevard. Now let me explain to the people, I'm a teacher, what these multi-bonds, these bonds are for multifamily revenue. Multifamily housing revenue bonds, also known as private activity bonds, enables affordable housing developers to obtain below-market financing because the interest income from the, from the bond is exempt from state and federal taxes. Plus, they get federal tax credits. Now I know personally, at 1050 Woolshire, right down Woolshire, 1050. It's called the GLO, G-L-O. They got this. They got the, they were exempt from state and federal taxes and they had federal tax credits. They brought in, they had about 10 affordable units, 10. Now let me tell you, this is not affordable. They have 10 and then all the rest of them, say, 50 or 60, they go market rate, two grand a month. So they let the, the 10 tenants stay in there about a year and a half. And then they told them they had to move. Some tenants complained, they took them to court, so they bought them out. They say, hey, we'll give you a couple thousand dollars if you leave. So this is a sham. And, and, and when the people went to the city, guess what the city said? Oh, well, we don't, we don't know anything about it. They went to the city attorney's office, well, we don't know anything about it. So they're getting all of these tax credits, they're not paying any federal and state taxes, and they kick out the affordable tenants within a year and a half. And they told the affordable tenants, now either you can pay that two grand a month or take this little money we're going to give you and leave. And most of them took the money and they left. Some just got a thousand dollars. And these people had children. And they weren't all African-Americans. They were Asians, they were different nationalities. So they don't care. Okay, so what I'm doing is, I have these addresses, I'm keeping a log, and I'm going by all of these properties and I'm going to let the people know every six months, every year, all this money, is it being built? And just like HHH, it was not being built.
Just give her one minute of general public comment, please. Thank you.
Okay, let me explain to my people, African-Americans, what's going on. Everyone in here, city council, the governor, all these politicians who run California, Los Angeles, and all the cities are Democrats. So when you walk down the street and drive and see all these tents, people on the street, 20,000 black people on Skid Row, those are African-Americans. And these are Democrats who's doing it to them, who's screwing them. Okay? Now, black people, this is what you have to do. We have to stop voting for these black politicians because we can't call racism. Because they'll say, oh, you got, we got three blacks on here, we got Harris, Dawson, we got Price, you know, we got so-and-so, so-and-so. Well, how can you cry racism? Well, that's why they bring the blacks on. They bring the blacks on so that they can use them as a shield so we can get screwed. So what we have to do is, don't, if, don't vote, don't vote for African-Americans. Then we'll call the white racists out. Because if they're all white racists, we can say, you racist, no-good Neanderthal, Oskar Nazims, we're going to get you out of office.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Madam President, sometimes misunderstanding spreads into misinformation, and I just want to state for the record, that it is a fact that the HHH expenditure of $1.2 billion thus far will build 8,625 units. Especially with this last round of approvals through the innovation approach. That gets us to the 8,600-plus units. We're very optimistic that we will get to that 10,000. That's what we all voted on when voters of Los Angeles voted in support of this $1.2 billion HHH bond. We will get there, we're not there yet, but we're getting close. So I just want to state that for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
That that's, that's exactly where we are with HHH.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for the facts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Arnold Sacks, can you, Ms. McCallister, please don't interrupt this meeting, thank you. Mr. Arnold Sacks? Mr. Sacks, you're speaking on items 28, 30, and 32 in your general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Yeah, so, city attorney said this is Tefra-funded housing. 500 units, $154 million, seven items. How old is Tefra? How long has Tefra been on the books? Has it been 10 years, has it been 20 years? How about MICLA funding? How long has that been on the books? Both of these programs provide bonds for housing. Mr. Wesson left, but when he, before he was city council president, he worked in the housing agency. How many houses did he have built through Tefra and MICLA? We had a foreclosure problem. How many homes were foreclosed? How many, how many citations were issued on the foreclosed homes? How many homes were bought by council members? Different question. How about covenants on these apartments? Now, yeah, we just heard about HHH, but if you had used this MICLA funding or this Tefra funding 20 years ago to build these homes, when the property was available, they would have been paid for. And you wouldn't have had the problem of 60,000 people being on the street, whether they're African-American, blue, black, yellow, orange, or green, they're homeless people. And the fact that you have black politicians who don't do anything while they're in office speaks volumes. But what happens is they keep getting reelected. Jan Perry pushed for an ordinance...
So it seems like we've, we've moved off of the Tefra, but could you get back on to it, please?
Well, we're talking about housing and, and what people do. So, Mr. City Attorney, how long has Tefra been around? Can you answer that question? No, because you don't do conversations back and forth. But can you answer the question about MICLA housing? I mentioned MICLA housing for Grand Avenue Project. They were going to use funds for that. So if they could use it for that, why can't they use it for other projects? How come people have to be put out on the street? How come people have to actually wait for housing when these bonds are available? If the city can... If the city can make loans, why don't they make loans? That's their business, putting people in housing. It's not free. You have rentals that can be appreciated. You can do funding to assist low-income people. There's going to be a pay wage coming up. How many people are going to be affected by that and lose their houses? Everything you do at the city council isn't just ass-backwards, it's fucking ass-backwards. And that makes it 10 times worse. And it's even worse at the board of supervisors. They just handed out $500 million for, to buy a hospital in cash. Where did they come up with $500 million? My public comment.
Go ahead and give him one minute of general public comment.
So, you know, I don't, I appreciate the celebration that went on. It's great. But there's no Dr. Mark Ridley Thomas here, no Jan Perry here, no Bernard Parks here, no Nate Holden here. I heard that Jeffrey Osborne sang for the Lakers on City Hall steps. I'd like to see him go out and sing on the City Hall steps today. There's a group of homeless people camped on the annex across the street. I'm sure they'd love to hear him speak, sing. So, I mean, when you self-congratulate yourself, and there's 60,000 homeless people living in Los Angeles, and it's the entertainment capital of the world, there's, there's a disconnect there someplace. I'm not sure. Maybe city attorney can point it out. By the way, if you pick up this guide, it mentions that the legislative government, the charter was changed in 1999 to provide a mayor-council-type governance. Doesn't say anything about the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Madam Clerk, just go ahead and vote on items 27 through 33. Mr. Moses, please stop interrupting this meeting. Thank you. Mr. Moses, I'm asking you again, please stop interrupting this meeting. You've already spoken. Thank you. Let's move on to items 27 through 33. Mr. Moses, you're interrupting this meeting. I'm going to have you removed if you continue disrupting this meeting. Let's go ahead and vote on items 27 through 33. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So we've got one general public comment. Mr. Juarez?
Good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and I have some information for you, all of you, and especially for you, Mr. Attorney Fobol Stefan. Since you're not complaining to state law to protect me as a disabled individual for harassment, intimidation, retaliation under the color of the law, 18 U.S.C. Section 245 and American Disability Act, under the action discrimination, how many times I need to file a complaint about the corruption with the Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department? Especially with all the rules. They don't want to do nothing about it. All the reduction of services, all the legal increases of rent. Why they keep protecting criminal management companies and slum landlords? And one of the worst slum landlords, that's a sour management company located in North Hollywood. That's the new landlord we have. And everything is in here. All the legal increases are ran by Joseph Placencia. 4%, 5%, 4%, that's illegal. And that's by the book, that's only 3%. That's enough is enough for these criminals. When you're going to remove public servants for this office? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juarez. And that is the last speaker for general public comments. Let's go ahead and close that. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we all rise for adjourning motions? Are there any adjourning motions to my right? Any adjourning motions to my left? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.